Good evening and welcome to the May 13th, 2024 Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. In the event of an emergency, please remain calm and exit through the double doors to my left and down the hall to the right. If the hallway is blocked, then exit to the left, around the corner, and down the steps. Please do not use the elevator and let us know if you need any assistance. Public comments will be heard on any item at the end of this agenda. Please complete a form on the table by the door and give it to the city clerk. You will have four minutes. At this time, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we invite Pastor Bill Reed from Parkway Church of God to give the city invocation.
Thank you for this opportunity. Father, we thank you, Lord, for a beautiful day. We thank you for your goodness, your love, your mercy, and your grace. Father, we come tonight seeking your guidance and direction as the City Council of Salisbury begins their meeting. Father, I thank you for the men and the women representing the citizens of Salisbury. They acknowledge their dependence upon you to ask for your favors to begin their meeting. Thank you, Lord, for the men and women that you have chosen to lead this great city. Father, we are living in what the Bible calls perilous times. In times like these, we need your help to navigate through the challenges and the issues we face as a city. Your word says that the steps of a good man, a good woman order the Lord. I ask for you to guide this council as they seek what is the best direction for the city of Salisbury, direct their every decision. We pray as Jesus prayed, "Not my will, but thy will be done." Thank you, Lord, for this council. Thank you for your direction. Thank you for the future that you are laying out to the city of Salisbury, and we praise you for what you're doing and going to do, in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Reed. We appreciate that. At this time, we have one proclamation to present, which myself and Councilwoman DeShiel will move forward.
Councilwoman DeShiel will be accepting this proclamation on behalf of the Assistant City Clerk, Julie English, who this directly affects. Whereas Huntington's disease is a rare, fatal, and inherited condition that causes nerve cells in different parts of the body to gradually break down and die, leading to physical and mental deterioration over a 10- to 25-year period. And common symptoms of HD include uncontrollable muscle movements, loss of coordination, and personality changes as HD progresses. Symptoms such as speech impairment, memory loss, and involuntary muscle movement become more severe. And whereas Huntington's disease is often described as having amypho- trific lateral sclerosis, ALS, Parkinson's, and Alzheimer's disease, at the same time with symptoms of personality changes, involuntary muscle movements, slurred speech, difficulty swallowing, depression or anxiety, forgetfulness, and impaired judgment. And whereas since 1993, when it was discovered which gene causes HD, the pace of HD research has accelerated. Several medications have developed to treat the symptoms, but there is still no cure. And whereas it is important to know that Huntington gene is a part of everyone's DNA, and it is when the CAG segment of that gene repeats more than usual that HD occurs. And whereas persons with a CAG repeat expansion greater than 35% to 50% chance of passing this disease onto their children. Often unknowingly, therefore, proper diagnosis of HD through a blood test can help slow down the spread of the disease. And whereas the Huntington's Disease Center at Johns Hopkins has been providing services to patients and families for more than 40 years, and was recognized by the Huntington's Disease Society of America as a center of excellence. Now, therefore, I, Deshaun M. Doughty, President of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as Huntington's Disease Awareness Month in our city, and encourage all citizens to visit Huntington's Disease Society of America website, hdsaa.org, to learn more about this fatal disease and how you can help support the families affected.
It is my honor to receive this proclamation on behalf of Julie. She's a huge advocate for this disease, but it's so personal, it would be very difficult for her to share with you what I'm going to share right now. There are people in our community that suffer from Huntington's disease. My son Nick is one of them. He is 24, and he is my world. He is at the very early stages of Huntington's, and as you heard from the proclamation, there is no cure for this disease. We received his test results in 2017, and ever since, I look at each day with him in a completely different way. I cannot put into words the effects Huntington's disease has on a family. I can simply say that it is life-changing. I want people to know about Huntington's disease, what it is, how and when it is passed on to others, and what it does to those suffering from it. Huntington's disease is passed on from parent to child. A person with Huntington's has a 50% chance of passing this horrific disease on to their children, and each time it is passed on, the mutation will likely grow. Please take time to visit hdsaa.org to educate yourself on this fatal disease. And on behalf of Julie, I thank you for your time and your interest in this disease. Thank you.
Thank you. And as a note, we want to make sure that our hearts and, of course, our thoughts are with Julie as she continues to deal with this disease with her son. At this time, could I have a motion and a second to adopt the legislative agenda? All those in favor of adopting the legislative agenda, please signify by saying aye. In hearing none opposed, the chair votes aye. Could I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
Good evening. On the consent agenda tonight, we have the April 1st, 2024 Work Session Minutes and Special Meeting Minutes, the April 8th Council Meeting Minutes and Closed Session Minutes, number one, and Closed Session Minutes, number two. The April 15th Work Session Minutes and Special Meeting Minutes. We have Resolution Number 3341 approving the appointment of Leslie Payton to the Youth Development Advisory Committee for term ending May 2027. Resolution Number 3342 approving the appointment of Devin LaFamina to the Human Rights Advisory Committee for term ending May 2026. Resolution Number 3343 approving the appointment of Julie Peters to the Human Rights Advisory Committee for term ending May 2026. And Resolution Number 3344 approving the appointment of Virginia Bender to the Disability Advisory Committee for term ending May 2027. That's it?
All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, the chair votes aye. And we thank Leslie Payton, Devin LaFamina, Julie Peters, and Virginia Bender for your work, and we can't wait to see what you'll do to your respective committees. Again, thank you so much. At this time, we'll move on to our Award of Bids, and we will have Procurement Director Jennifer Miller joining us via Zoom. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the Award of Bids?
Good evening, council. Thank you for allowing me to join via Zoom this evening. The Department of Procurement seeks award of bid approval from City Council for the solicitations as defined herein. The city followed requiring bidding practices as defined by the Salisbury Charter and the Municipal Code of Ordinances, and publicly posted the solicitations for the competitively bid procurements on the city of Salisbury's procurement portal and the state of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace Advantage. We have quite a few this evening. The first is Invitation to Bid A-24-113. This is Water Meters and Supplies for the Department of Waterworks. This is to provide and deliver Neptune Water Meters and Supplies. The vendor is Core &amp; Main from Milton, Delaware. The city spends approximately $300,000 to $400,000 per year on water meters and supplies. The GL account noted in your packet is the account that would fund that purchase, and they're ordered as needed and supplied as needed. This would be per Municipal Code 2.32.050.c.5, non-competitive negotiation, sole source procurement. It's when the director of procurement determines that there's only one available source for the subject of a procurement contract, and that I may award that contract without competition to that source. So in your packet, we did provide the sole source justification and the manufacturer letter attached.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. All those in favor of approving those award of bids, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In hearing none opposed, the chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Did you want me to go through any of the other ones? There's four other ones, and then there's also Declaration of Surplus.
Yes, please.
Okay, very good. The second one is ITB Invitation to Bid Number 24-115. That's the Paleo Water Treatment Plant Well Flow Meters. This was also for the Department of Waterworks. This is to provide and install flow meters on well one and well number two for the Paleo Water Treatment Plant. Bids went public on February 28th and were opened on April 2nd. We received four responsive and responsible bids. The vendor to be awarded there is TK Construction from Salisbury, Maryland, at a cost of $338,850. The accounts noted in your packet are fully funded to support that purchase.
Thank you.
The next item is RFP 24-102. This is the Naylor Mill Water Main Extension Design Services. Also for the Department of Waterworks, this is to design the water main extension to provide water service to the Naylor Mill Mobile Home Park. Proposals went on the street December 29th, 2023, and were opened on January 31st, 2024. We did receive seven proposals. I would ask that you also read the departmental award recommendation for evaluative scoring, which is in your packet. We would like to award that to A. Morton Thompson Associates from Rockville, Maryland. The total cost for that work is $183,700. And then this award is contingent upon award approval by the Maryland Department of the Environment, which I just remembered we got on Friday.
Thank you.
All right. The next item this evening is RFP A-24-109. That's SCADA Maintenance. This is for the Department of Waterworks. This is technical services for the repair, maintenance, training, and minor upgrades to the SCADA system. Proposals went live on February 2nd and were opened on March 7th. We did receive two proposals, one of which was deemed non-responsive. We wish to award to Keystone Engineering Group from Fraser, PA. We spend approximately $50,000 to $70,000 per year for annual SCADA maintenance costs. The GL accounts noted in your packet would be what funds those costs. This would be an indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity contract, which includes renewal clause up to two one-year terms. One more, Award of Bid. The last one is RFP A-24-107. This is the ESPP Billing and Consulting for the Salisbury Fire Department. This is professional services related to Medicaid billing under the Emergency Service Transporter Supplemental Payment Program. The proposal date on this was March 13th. We opened proposals April 12th. We got one proposal that was from Public Consulting Group in Boston, Massachusetts. The cost is 9% of the settlement payment revenue, and a GL account hasn't been determined for that yet. This also would be an IDIQ contract with renewal clause up to two one-year terms. If no questions, I can move right into the surplus items. The first this evening is for the Salisbury Fire Department. It's 35 Motorola radios. We would like to sell those via public auction. The other item from the Salisbury Fire Department is turnout gear and firefighter boots. They would be disposed of according to the NFPA 1851 standards. And information regarding both of those lots of items are in your council packets. There's one other item that we do wish to talk about tonight. This is under Chapter 2.36, Disposition of Surplus or Unused Real Property, 2.36.040, Procedure of the Salisbury Municipal Code. This is asking City Council to declare the following real property as surplus. This is the Anne Street Village. As far as the method of disposition, we did brief council several weeks back when we did put out a request for information, got several responses, but we would need to declare that parcel, the improvements there on surplus, if we want to move forward and do any kind of lease agreement or any kind of sale for the lot or any improvements thereon.
Thank you. Just one question relating, as it relates to the last item that you just discussed. Well, I guess rather two. Since this is coming before council, I'm assuming that the conversations have moved forward in a positive manner with the request for intent. I always get this wrong. The intent to, what is that called, Ms. Miller, the RF?
Sure. So we put out a request for expressions of interest. We did that because we initially had one entity that was interested in doing some type of a lease arrangement to continue services there for the city. So what we did to ensure if there were other entities that wanted to do the same thing, we put out this request for expressions of interest. We did get other folks that were interested. So our next step would actually be to put out a request for proposal to actually get true proposal. So we haven't sat down, nor has HCDD, with anybody to, you know, develop a lease agreement or, you know, anything like that at this point. So this really just starts the process from this point.
Okay. And then my follow-up question is, with declaring these as surplus, is there any dollar amount that is given to, since we are declaring this surplus, what is the figure that we can attach to, especially the units in the addition to? So the housing units, the storage, all of those items?
Yeah. So I believe what our next step was gonna be, I was talking to Muir about a week or two ago, we would look to have an appraisal done on the property. And then that information we would put in the public request for proposal packet.
Gotcha. Thank you. Any other questions from council for Ms. Miller? Ms. Miller, do you have anything else to add?
I don't.
Okay. Now, given that, could I have a motion, all those in favor approving the Award of Bids, please signify by saying aye. In hearing none opposed, the chair votes aye. Thank you for that detailed description and explanation of all those items, Ms. Miller.
Thank you, council.
We'll move forward to Resolutions, which will be presented by the City Administrator, Andy Kitzro. We'll start with 3345. Could I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 3345?
Greetings. Resolution Number 3345, a resolution of the Council of the City of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to accept the donation of real property located at 404 Hastings Street, Salisbury, Maryland, 21804, from Perry W. Willie, whereas the donor owner Perry W. Willie desires to donate real property located at 404 Hastings Street, Salisbury, Maryland, 21804, which he acquired by deed dated November 24th, 1999, and which is recorded among the land records of Wycomica County, Maryland, in library number 3138, Folio 354. And whereas there are outstanding real estate taxes and interest due to the city of Salisbury for this property in the amount of $1,119.17 approximately. And whereas there's an outstanding real estate taxes and interest due to Wycomica County in the amount of $1,021.82 approximately. And whereas the city of Salisbury is interested in obtaining vacant lots and/or abandoned properties, which create a blighting influence on our neighborhoods, so that said properties may be either rehabilitated for sale or designated for a purpose that is beneficial to the neighborhoods where they are located. And whereas by this resolution, the council hereby approves the acceptance of the donation of real property located at 404 Hastings Street, Salisbury, Maryland, 21804, from Perry W. Willie, contingent upon the city obtaining clear title to the property, and that the city will waive or pay the outstanding fees and taxes currently due on this property, referenced herein. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows. Section 1, that the mayor is hereby authorized to accept the donation on behalf of the city of Salisbury from Perry W. Willie of 404 Hastings Street, Salisbury, Maryland, 21804, and to sign all documents which may be necessary in connection with the donation. Section 2, that the city solicitor shall handle the settlement for the property and shall perform all actions necessary to ensure that clear title to the property is obtained by the city before the city is obligated to accept the donation of property. The rest of the sections are boilerplate.
Thank you, Mr. Kitzro. Okay. All those in favor of ordinance number, or sorry, Resolution Number 3345, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Could I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 3346?
All right, this is a long one, so, my favorite annexation. Resolution Number 3346, a resolution of the Council of the City of Salisbury proposing the annexation to the city of Salisbury of a certain area of land contiguous to and binding upon the corporate limits of the city of Salisbury to be known as Dia Patel Properties 12 LLC West Road Annexation, beginning from the scene at a point being south 3 degrees 10 minutes 58 seconds east, a distance of 191 decimal 62 feet from a corner of the existing corporate limits line, the city of Salisbury, Maryland, being on the said corporate limits line at a point being 1.48 feet easterly of the corner of Lot 11 of the Manoak, Manukin subdivision, thenceby and with the northerly line of the said Lot 11, in part, south 86 degree 53 minutes 8 seconds west, 135 decimal 15 feet to a point at the northerly, northerly, westerly corner of the lot said, excuse me, north corner of the said Lot 11, thenceby and with the said line, Lot 11, in part, south 3 degrees 30 minutes 52 seconds east, 281 decimal 50 feet to a point at the southwesterly corner of Lot, excuse me, Lot 3, thenceby and with the southerly line, Lot 13, I apologize, thenceby and within the southerly Lot Line of said Lot 13, in part, north 67 degrees 25 minutes east, 8 seconds east, 141 decimal 56 feet to a point being 1.87 feet beyond the southeastly corner of the said Lot 13, also being near the westerly line, the West Road, on the existing, after said corporate limits line, thenceby and with the said corporate limits line, north 3 degrees 10 minutes 58 seconds west, 234 decimal 32 feet to the point of being. Whereas, the city of Salisbury has received a petition for annexation date July 29th, 2022, attached here too as Exhibit 1, incorporated by reference, as a fully set forth herein, signed by at least 25% of the persons who are resident registered voters and of the persons who are owners of at least 25%. The assessed valuation of real property in the area is sought to be annexed binding upon the corporate limits. The city of Salisbury to be known as Dia Patel Properties X11, excuse me, XII LLC West Road Annexation, beginning at a point contiguous to and binding upon the existing corporate limits line of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, being at the southernmost point of the affected property on the westerly right-of-way of West Road at the western corporate limits of the city of Salisbury, continuing around the perimeter of the affected property to the point of beginning, being all that real property identified as map 0038, grid 0001, parcel 0346, block A, Lot 11. as map 0038, grid 0001, parcel 0346, block A, Lot 11, Lot 12, and Lot 13, and further being the same real property, more particularly described in the property description attached here too in Exhibit 2, and incorporated as a fully set forth herein. And whereas the City of Salisbury has cause to be made a certification of the signature on the said petition for the annexation, and the City of Salisbury has verified that the person signing the petition represent at least 25% of the persons who are eligible voters and property owners owning 25% of the assessed valuation of real property in the area to be annexed, all as of January 6th, 2023, as set forth in the certification by Lessey Sherrill, surveyor of the City of Salisbury, attached here too as Exhibit 3, incorporated by reference as a fully set forth herein. And whereas it appears that the aforementioned petition for annexation dated July 29th, 2022, meets all the requirements of applicable state and local law, and whereas pursuant to Maryland Code Local Government 4-406, a public hearing on this resolution, providing for the City of Salisbury's annexation of the property as set forth herein, shall be made as hereby scheduled for June 10th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Salisbury as follows. Section 1, it is proposed and recommended that the municipal boundaries of the City of Salisbury be changed so as to annex and include within the said municipal boundaries of the City of Salisbury all the certain real property, more particularly described in Exhibit 2, attached here too and incorporated by reference as a fully set forth herein. Section 2, the annexation of the property being hereby is approved by the Council of the City of Salisbury, subject to all terms, conditions, and agreements, contained in the aforementioned property description, the proposed annexation agreement, and the annexation plan attached as Exhibits 2, 4, and 5 respectively, each of which is attached here too and incorporated herein, as if all such terms, conditions, and agreements contained in such exhibits were specifically set forth in length in this resolution. Section 3, the zoning map of the City of Salisbury shall be amended to include the property within the certain zoning district of the City of Salisbury identified as general commercial, with said real property newly annexed into corporate limits of the City of Salisbury as contemplated by this resolution as presently zoned C-2 general commercial in accordance with existing zoning laws of Wycomica County, Maryland. Section 4, pursuant to Maryland Code Local Government 4-406, the Council of the City of Salisbury shall hold a public hearing on the resolution on June 10th, 2024, at 6:00 PM in the council chambers at the, excuse me, I think it's at the government office building, just like change, government office building, room 300, and the city administrator shall cause a public notice of time and place of the said public hearing to be published, not fewer than two times, at not less than, excuse me, at not less than weekly intervals in at least one newspaper of general circulation in the City of Salisbury, which said public notice shall specify time and place at which the Council of the City of Salisbury will hold the after said public hearing, the date of which shall be no sooner than 15 days after the final required date of publication as specified here and above. Would you like to hear it again?
Yes. Yes, okay. So all those in favor of Resolution Number 3346, with the amendment to line 75, changing the location of the council meeting, please signify by. Do we motion? Sure. Could I have a motion to amend line number 75, changing the description of the council meetings? Great. All those in favor of Resolution Number 3346, with the change, with the approved motion, please signify by saying aye.
Are these apartments, do you know, Andy, are they going to be affordable?
I don't have that information directly in front of me.
Did you get that information?
Absolutely.
Of the council?
Thank you.
That actual area? I'm looking to see that they are fair and affordable.
City clerk, are we okay on the amendment?
Yes, everybody voted on the amendment.
Yes. Okay, so. Yes. All those in favor of Resolution Number 3346 as amended, please signify by saying aye. Hearing not opposed, the chair votes aye. Could I have a motion in a second to approve Resolution Number 3347?
We're gonna face something similar in line 55. Do you want me to read it as amended? Okay, great. Resolution Number 3347, a resolution of the Council of the City of Salisbury proposing the annexation to the City of Salisbury of a certain area of land contiguous to and binding upon the corporate limits of City of Salisbury to be known as the Dia Patel Properties XII LLC West Road Annexation, beginning for the same, at a point being south 3 degrees 10 minutes 58 seconds east, distance of 191 decimal 62 feet from a corner of the existing corporate limits line of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, being on the said corporate limits line at a point being 1.48 feet easterly of the corner of Lot 11 of the Manoken subdivision, thenceby and with the northerly line of the said Lot 11, in part, south 86 degrees 53 minutes 8 seconds west, 135 decimal 15 feet to a point at the northwesterly corner of the said Lot 11, thenceby and with the said line, Lot 11, in part, south 3 degrees 30 minutes 52 seconds east, 281 decimal 50 feet to a point at the southwesterly corner of Lot 13, thenceby and with the southerly line of the said Lot 13, in part, north 67 degrees 25 minutes 8 seconds east, 141 decimal 56 feet to a point being 1.87 feet beyond the southeastally corner of the said Lot 13, also being near the westerly line of West Road on existing after said corporate limits line, thenceby and with the said corporate limits line, north 3 degrees 10 minutes 58 seconds west, 234 decimal 32 feet to the point of the beginning. Whereas pursuant to that certain petition for annexation dated July 29th, 2022, attached here too as Exhibit Incorporated by Reference as here, fourth set, excuse me, Reference as if fully set forth herein, the City of Salisbury proposes that the annexation of the City of Salisbury of a certain area of land contiguous to and binding upon the corporate limits of the City of Salisbury to be known as the Dia Patel Properties XII LLC West Road Annexation, beginning at a point contiguous to and binding upon the existing corporate limits line of the City of Salisbury, being at the southernmost point of the affected property on the westerly right of the way of the West Road, the western corporate limits of the City of Salisbury, continuing around the perimeter of the affected property to the point of beginning, being all the real property identified as a map 0038, grid 0001, parcel 0346, block A, Lot 11, Lot 12, and Lot 13, and further being the same real property, more particularly described in the property description here too, attached here too as Exhibit 2, and whereas pursuant to Maryland Code Local Government 4-415, the City of Salisbury is required to adopt an annexation plan for the proposed annexation of the property. And whereas pursuant to Maryland Code Local Government 4-406, a public hearing on this resolution, providing for the Council of the City of Salisbury, approval of the annexation plan for the City of Salisbury's annexation of the property as set forth herein, shall be and hereby is scheduled for June 10th, 2024, at 6:00 PM. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Salisbury as follows. Section 1, the annexation plan for the Dia Patel Properties XII LLC West Road Annexation, attached here too as Exhibit 3, and incorporated as if fully set forth herein, being hereby is adopted by the City of Salisbury annexation of the property as contemplated by this resolution. Section 2, pursuant to Maryland Code Local Government 4-406, the Council of the City of Salisbury shall hold a public hearing on the resolution on June 10th, 2024, at 6:00 PM in the council chamber at the government office building located at 125 North Division Street. And the city administrator shall cause a public notice of time and place of the said public hearing to be published, not fewer than two times, at not less than weekly intervals, in at least one newspaper of general circulation in the City of Salisbury, which said public notice shall specify a time and a place at which the council, the City of Salisbury will, Salisbury will hold the after said public hearing, the date of which shall be no sooner than 15 days after the final required date of publication as specified here above. The rest is boilerplate.
All right. I will entertain a motion to amend line 55 to correctly specify the location of the city council meeting and description. All those in favor of the amendment as follows, please signify by saying aye. Chair votes aye. And all those in favor of Resolution Number 3347 as amended, please signify by saying aye. Hold on one second.
My question is.
Hold on, I think we have to finish the, we have to finish that first and then we can go into discussion. Your vote, councilwoman?
Nay.
Councilwoman, it's you.
Mine would be nay until we find out if it's affordable.
That's right.
Sorry, I didn't push the button.
Mine would be nay until we find out if it's affordable housing.
I think we asked that question when we, last week, and the implication was that it was.
Because it's like 12 units or something.
Right.
It's a small, it's not a big market.
We can't go on implication. We need to know for sure.
No, I'm just telling you what they said.
No, I understand what you're saying, but we need to know for sure. I mean, we're sitting here and we're making votes and we're passing, you know, making the votes and saying yea and nay, but I need to know because that community needs fair and affordable housing. I'm not saying the whole City of Salisbury doesn't need it everywhere, but that particular area does need it. And I know we cannot tell developers what to build, but we can tell them how we want it in our communities. And that's what I'm fighting for. I'm, I just don't want you to keep putting up houses and charging people 15, 16, $1,700 for housing and people can't afford it here. I just, no, nay, till I find out. With definite, I need some information before I say anything else, any further from here. I need to find out whether this is gonna be affordable, fair, and affordable housing.
City administrator, question for you before we continue with the vote. One, we just approved the annexation of.
The property.
The property, the first.
I didn't, and I'm gonna tell you, I was doing the amendment, but I wasn't going for actual, the actual finalizing of it. No, I'm just not, no. So you can take me off of the list for that too. I'm just not. You gotta be careful what we're doing here.
Would this be? This be a better conversation to have for, because they're gonna have to go to planning and zoning and do, I mean, they're just, this is just annexing the property in, correct?
Correct. For unintended use to build apartments, the, are they affordable or not? I, you know, there can be conclusions drawn based off of the drawings.
Sure.
And recommendations from our city planner based off of what it's looked like there, but it'd be out of turn for me to say exactly what the developer is going to build or intends to build without the developer presenting that information further. I'm not sure if that would make us as an organization decide not to annex property into the city because it's not.
Right. Yeah, I wanna make sure that we're acting in proper sense, right? So, you know, I definitely understand and I agree with that, but just given our, what our role is here, it's not to decide to annex whether yea or nay because of a certain reason. I just wanna make that clear while it's a, that is a reason, but that's not. Would that be a clause to accept or deny someone for annexing a property into the city?
For the specific use of that property.
Right.
Typically, we do not distinguish within a zoning code.
Okay.
What type of housing. You will notice that it is for housing in an apartment complex. Is it affordable? Is it not? Is it rent controlled? Those things would be for further conversation later on. But again, it would be out of place for me to, especially, it would've been nice to have done this earlier.
Just like you just said, you cannot give us false hopes. You do not know. And that's what I'm saying. We need to know. I mean, I'm not gonna say that I may not stop the project, but we still need to know. We just can't assume that something's gonna take place and we're annexing land and then we're not holding the people's feet to the fire to do what needs to be done in our communities. I'm not, no, I'm just, no, I'm no for, nay, no, I'm not going for that, no. I'm just not. I just feel as that we should know for sure what's going there before I make a stand and say, yes, I need to know.
Mr. President, if this, if this vote is for whether or not, as I'm interpreting what you're saying, this is separating the annexation as a separate vote, then what they do with the property becomes a different topic, correct? So that when that comes up, when they decide what to do with it, how would we then move forward as far as defining whether or not it would be affordable housing? And is that a separate vote from what you're asking of us tonight?
That does not come back before council. That is a decision point of what is actually developed there goes before Planning Commission.
Okay.
There is a member of council that sits on the Planning Commission Board to vote for that, for further conversation. I'm not sure Heather, if you wanna jump in at all, but from a procedural standpoint, this, we're starting to go into more into like a work session, conversation right now. I think we are here to talk about if the property should be annexed and if the annexation plan, which is what is on the table is the annexation plan.
Right.
Not what is being built there, so I'm not sure.
In the packet, I just wanna, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so, and I just wanna be, you know, put this out there and be mindful that this petition for annexation has been in existence since July 29th, 2022. So they have been going through and petitioning the city for a while in these lots. And by doing all the surveying and stuff, it's now time to bring it to, you know, annexation or not. Okay. So it's in our packet, in our packet, it's on page 86. I just wanted to be, just to bring that up.
Okay. So again, just going back, all those in favor of Resolution Number 3347 as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The public hearing for Dia Patel Properties XII LLC West Road Annexation will be held on June 10th, 2024, at 6:00 PM. Thank you, city administrator. All right. Moving on to the FY 25 budget ordinances, we'll call city attorney Heather Conyer to the podium. Can I get a motion in a second to approve ordinance Number 2870 for first reading?
So moved.
Ms. Conyer?
Ordinance Number 2870, an ordinance appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of the City of Salisbury, Maryland for the period July 1, 2024, to July 30, 2025, establishing the levy for the general fund for the same fiscal period and establishing the appropriation for the water and sewer, parking authority, city marina, and stormwater funds. Be it ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland that the amounts listed in Schedule A, Operating Budget Appropriations, are hereby appropriated for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2025, to fund operations of the City of Salisbury, Maryland. Be it further ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland that the amounts listed in Schedule B, Capital Project Appropriations, are hereby appropriated for capital projects. Be it further ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland the amounts listed in Schedule C, Anticipated Grant Expenditures, are hereby appropriated for the grants listed, and the mayor is authorized to enter into any necessary agreements or memoranda in order to receive and expend these funds. Be it further ordained that one, the tax levy be and the same be hereby set at 1.0332 per $100 of assessed valuation for all real property, at $3.51 per $100 of assessed valuation for all personal property categorized as utilities, and at $2.40 per $100 of assessed valuation for all other personal property subject to taxation by the City of Salisbury for general fund purposes, including. for general fund purposes, including debt service purposes, exclusive of revenues derived from the Water and Sewer Fund for debt service purposes attributed to water and sewer activities. And two, all tax levies by this ordinance shall be liens from and after July 1, 2024, and shall be due and payable as specified in Title 14 of the Tax Property Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland as amended. And be it further ordained by the Salisbury City Council that a public hearing on the proposed budget ordinance will be held at 4:30 PM on June 3, 2024, in room 301 of the City County Government Office Building, 125 North Division Street, Salisbury, Maryland. And be it further ordained by the Salisbury City Council that this ordinance shall take effect upon final passage. And of course, schedules A, B and C are attached to the ordinance.
Thank you. All those in favor of ordinance number 2870, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Can I get a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 2871 for first reading?
So moved. Second.
Ordinance number 2871, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, to amend water and sewer rates to increase rates by 9% and making said changes effective for all bills dated October 1, 2024 and thereafter unless and until subsequently revised or changed. Whereas the water and sewer rates must be revised in accordance with the proposed fiscal year 2025 budget of the city of Salisbury and the appropriations thereby made and established for purposes of the water and sewer departments. Now therefore, be it ordained and enacted by the council of the city of Salisbury, that the water and sewer rate schedule set forth herein shall be adopted as follows. Section 1A sets forth the water and sewer rate schedules. Schedule 1 addresses the metered water changes in city rates. Schedule 2 addresses the meter water charges outside city rates. Schedule 3 addresses the metered water charges for the Warwick Community College and Urban Service District rates. Schedule 4 addresses the sewer charges in city rates. Schedule 5 addresses the sewer charges outside city rates. Schedule 6 addresses the sewer charges for the Warwick Community College and Urban Service District rates. Schedule 7 addresses the sewer charges for sewer only customers. Schedule 8 addresses commercial and industrial activities, and then Section B sets forth the definitions of residential and small commercial customers, commercial customers and large commercial industrial customers. Section C talks about the calculation of bills for residential and small commercial customers and also for commercial and large commercial industrial customers. The remainder of the ordinance is boilerplate.
All those in favor of ordinance number 2871, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Could I have a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 2872 for first reading?
So moved. Second.
Ordinance number 2872, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, to set fees for fiscal year 2025 and thereafter unless and until subsequently revised or changed. Whereas the fees charged by the city are reviewed and then revised in accordance with the adoption of the fiscal year 2025 budget of the city of Salisbury. And whereas the fee amounts set forth in the fiscal year 2025 fee schedule attached here too and incorporated herein as Exhibit 1, identify and list all fee payment, all fee amounts to be charged and otherwise assessed by the city of Salisbury for the period of the fiscal year 2025 in accordance with the adoption of the fiscal year 2025 budget of the city of Salisbury. And that, and now therefore be it ordained and enacted by the council of the city of Salisbury as follows. Section 1, the fee amounts set forth in the fiscal year 2025 fee schedule, attached here too as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein as if fully set forth in this Section 1 are hereby adopted by the council of the city of Salisbury, and furthermore, the fee amounts set forth in the fiscal year 25 fee schedule shall supersede the corresponding fee amounts set forth in the city of Salisbury municipal code until one or more of such fee amounts are subsequently amended. The remainder of this ordinance is boilerplate. With regard to the fee schedule that is attached to this ordinance, I will note that the strike-throughs are the changes from the last version and the underlines are new additions to the last version of the ordinance.
All those in favor of ordinance number 2872, please signify by saying aye.
Nay. Sorry. Nay. This, the fee schedule, this is the first time I'm even seeing it, and I asked for it at the second day of the budget hearing, and some of this stuff I don't even recognize, and there's other stuff I'm not even sure is, was, could be taken, had been taken off.
Let's finish the, let's finish the vote.
I'm gonna vote nay.
And the chair votes nay. The budget public hearings will be held on June 3rd, 2024 at 4:30. Since we all voted nay, do we have to push that date back? City clerk, this so stands? Okay, great, thank you. Could I have a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 2864 for second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2864, an ordinance of the council of the city of Salisbury to authorize and empower city of Salisbury to sell an issue from time to time upon its full faith and credit, one or more series of 1A general obligation bonds and B general obligation bond anticipation notes, each in an original aggregate principal amount not to exceed $13,212,743, and 2 general obligation refunding bonds, subject to the limitations provided for herein. The proceeds of this sale thereof to be used and applied for the public purpose of financing, reimbursing or refinancing costs of the public purpose projects identified herein is Station Number 16 HVAC replacement, downtown streetscaping, town square, town square, rail, trail master plan implementation, apparatus replacement, rescue 16, Johnson Pond Dam improvements, Beagland Park Dam improvements, GOB exterior waterproofing, zoo facility improvements, North Prong Park land acquisition, street light additions and replacement, amphitheater pedestrian bridge, restore park well field, restore paleo well field, wastewater treatment plant electric upgrades, park well field raw water main and valve replacement, Glenn Avenue lift station, wastewater treatment plan, plant, outfall inspection and repairs, Southside pump station force main, park well field, park well 2, solid waste disposal and cost of issuance. Specifying the maximum original aggregate principal amount of the bonds or bond anticipation notes provided for herein to be allocated to each such project, subject to reallocation by the city in accordance with applicable budgetary procedures or law, providing that the council by resolution shall determine, approve or provide for various matters relating to the authorization, sale, security, issuance, delivery, payment and prepayment or redemption of and for each series of the bonds, the bond anticipation notes and the refunding bonds, each a series of the obligations or the obligations, providing for the imposition of ad ver lorem taxes sufficient for and pledging the full faith and credit and unlimited taxing power of the city to the payment of the debt service on each series of the obligations, providing that debt service on each series of the obligations also may be paid from any other sources of revenue lawfully available to the city for such purpose, providing that certain actions may be taken or provided for by resolution in connection with the reissuance or modification of any of the obligations, providing that any of the obligations may be consolidated with other obligations of the city and issued as a single series of bonds, bond anticipation notes and/or refunding bonds, authorizing directing and empowering officials and employees of the city to take certain actions in connection with the obligations, authorizing modifications of the obligations to be made by resolution unless another action is required, providing that this title shall be deemed a statement of the substance of this ordinance for all purposes, providing that the provisions of this ordinance shall be liberally construed and otherwise generally relating to the sale, issuance and delivery and payment of and for the obligations. This is before you for second reader, there are no additions or amendments from first reader.
All those in favor of ordinance number 2864, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, the chair votes aye. Can I get, can I get a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 2866 for second reading?
Second.
Ordinance number 2866, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to sign a grant agreement and accept grant funds in the total sum of $25,000 from the Governor Highway Safety Association to continue the partnership of the city of Salisbury with Salisbury University to train and equip youth ambassadors in the Salisbury area. This ordinance is before you for second reading, there have been no additions or corrections from first reading.
All those in favor of ordinance number 2866, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, the chair votes aye. Could I have a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 2867 for first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 28...68?
Seven.
Seven, I'm sorry, I skipped one. Ordinance number 2867, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the fiscal year 2024 parking authority fund budget to appropriate funds for salaries. Whereas parking authority in the city is of high importance, and whereas for the remainder of fiscal year 2024, there are insufficient funds for parking authority salaries and for on and off-street parking maintenance and updates, and whereas the parking authority within the Department of Field Operations has a salary budget currently at negative $12,051.79 and a streets and lights budget currently at $1,210.87 for the remainder of fiscal year 2024. And whereas the parking authority within the Department of Field Operations has estimated $57,000 would be required to properly maintain current salaries and on and off-street maintenance and updates, and whereas the budget amendment as provided herein must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of four fifths of the council of the city of Salisbury. Now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 1, the city of Salisbury's fiscal year 2024 general fund budget, be and hereby is amended as follows. A, increase the current year salary account by $39,000. B, increase the streets and lots account by $18,000. C, increase the current surplus available account by $57,000.
All those in favor of ordinance number 2867, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, the chair votes aye. Could I have a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 2868 for first reading?
Ordinance number 2868, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the fiscal year 2024 general fund budget to appropriate funds to the Salisbury Fire Department's operating budget. Whereas the city has declared two Motorola APX 6000 Series portable radios as surplus and the radios have been sold at auction, and whereas the radios were operated by the Salisbury Fire Department, and whereas the city has received a total $1,925 from the proceeds generated from the auction sale and placed the funds in the city general fund, and whereas the fire department has use for the funds received and requests that the funds of $1,925 be reallocated to the fire department operating budget for fiscal year 2024, and whereas the budget amendment as provided herein must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of four fifths of the county of the city of Salisbury. Now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 1, the city of Salisbury's fiscal year 2024 general fund budget, be and hereby is amended as follows. A, increase the sale of fixed assets account by $1,925. B, increase the Salisbury Fire Department's vehicles account by $1,925.
All those in favor of ordinance number 2868, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, the chair votes aye. Could I have a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 2869 for first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2869, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Chesapeake Bay Trust for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $1,272, and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds for the Salisbury Edible Community Garden. Whereas the Community Bay Trust has a community engagement and restoration mini-grant program, and whereas the purpose of the grant program is to benefit organizations that serve health and human services, education, arts and culture, community development, environment and historical preservation, and whereas the city of Salisbury submitted a grant application to the community, to the Chesapeake Bay Trust for funding to support and restore the Edible Community Garden, and whereas the Chesapeake Bay Trust has awarded the city funds in the amount of $1,272, and whereas the city of Salisbury must enter into a grant agreement with the Chesapeake Bay Trust defining how these funds must be expended, and whereas all funds shall be used to bring the Edible Community Garden into good standing for the benefit of public use, and whereas Section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the council of the city of Salisbury, and whereas the appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of four fifths of the council of the city of Salisbury. Now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 1, Mayor Randolph J. Taylor is hereby authorized to enter into a grant agreement with the Chesapeake Bay Trust on behalf of the city of Salisbury for the city's acceptance of grant funds in the amount of $1,272. Be it further enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 2, the city of Salisbury's grant fund budget, be and hereby is amended as follows. A, increase the Chesapeake Bay Trust E and R revenue account by $1,272. B, increase expense account by $1,272.
All those in favor of ordinance number 2869, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, the chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. Conyer. At this time, we'll move forward to the public comments portion of the agenda, you will have four minutes, and I will call them in order of receipt. We'll call Paula Donalds to the podium.
Sorry.
[laughing].
I made it a perfect day today, worked in the yard, tried to go to the gym, got here. So, city taxpayer, and basically what I am going to say is actually gonna be directed to Ms. Blake, you're my district. I came to you less than a year ago to ask you about our roads in my community. Long-established community roads are going ignored, just listen to a whole bunch of budget stuff and ayes and nays and so on and so forth. Nothing was ever brought up about my community. It is official that Shoemaker Manor Roads are third-world community roads. They are caving in, you cannot get enough coal top to put over top of the potholes. The guttering systems are caving, you go up and down on the roads, and there's only three roads in that community. It's time to do something, council. Mr. Andy, you told me that we were on the, a list, we want to be on the list to get our roads attention. What are you gonna do about it, Ms. Blake? What have you done about it? What are you gonna do about it, Mr. Andy? What have you done about it? The lifespan of our community road is done, it's done. It's time to do something about it, council. It's done. We hear lifespans about the library, we hear lifespans about the parking garage. You're ignoring the community. Long-life communities need attention. We don't need more housing, we need industry here in order to obtain people to live in the houses. I went through Johnson Retreat today, I counted maybe 10 people living in there, and I'm gonna say there's over 100 and maybe 80, I don't know, I don't know, I'm just gonna take a guess, over 100 homes in there. It's time to do something with our neighborhoods. Enough focus on downtown and doing all of this. Get back to the neighborhoods. Ms. Blake, you're my district, get back to the neighborhoods. It's time to do something about it, what are you gonna do about it? In fact, that's a great saying that Mr. John Palmer, you know Mr. Palmer, Board of Education? He brought that up the other day. What are you all gonna do about it when he was asking and begging about four more million dollars for our schools? Because we can't retain teachers in our schools because we have 60 different... Because we can't retain teachers in our schools because we have 60 different languages coming into our school system. What are you going to do about it? It's time to do something about our neighborhoods. We want to be on the list. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paula. And you'll want to attend the budget meeting. Council has been hearing your concerns, and we made some council-level appropriations to make sure we take care of our streets, and we've been hearing that concern. So we'll look forward to seeing you there. Mike Goldberg?
Good evening. Mike Goldberg, Delmar, Wycomico County. Well, folks, she got away with it. She pulled off Safari at the Quarry a little over a week ago. She's going to do it again. She's made herself... Julie Giordano, that is. She's made herself abundantly clear as to her intention to move forward with more off-road events at the Connolly Mill Quarry site. She did it despite the fact that the city council has opposed its objections, the county council has, the city attorney has, the people have. We have 800 signatures on our petition now to turn that into a park. She thumbed her nose at everybody, unfortunately. Now we're in a position where we received a response to the city attorney's letter from Paul Wilber, the county attorney. And in his response letter, he cited no law. He cited no legal precedent. What he gave us was a great big nothing burger. There was nothing there except for the grease. And we really would, of course, love to pin him down to just what his legal theory is on why these events did not violate the R-8A zoning. Clearly, they did. He doesn't have an answer. That's abundantly clear. That's why it was just all blue smoke and mirrors. If you don't give law, if you can't quote law, you can't cite precedent. You simply don't have a case. So despite all of these problems, we know they're going to happen again. And what do we do about it at this point? The city can do something about it, and I think Mayor Taylor holds the keys. Unfortunately, he's not here tonight. There's really no choice but to move forward by doing three things. One, the citations for the zoning code violation need to be issued and the fines levied. Would strongly urge the county executive to terminate the MOU for convenience. That doesn't leave any liability for the city or the county. There's a termination for convenience clause in the MOU. You can do it for any reason. You know, I don't like your hat. In fact, Julie told me that. She thought my black Stetson was stupid, in fact, she told me. Good enough reason to cancel an MOU, though, isn't it? Doesn't take any excuse other than the county desires to cancel. And if she refuses to do it, here's what the city can do. They can file for a permanent injunction. And it is only a permanent injunction that's going to stop these events from occurring in the future, unfortunately. May sound a little scary to do it, but it's something that's definitely doable, and I do believe the city would prevail, based on what I know. If... she should be given a very short window of opportunity to cancel, and if she fails to do it, and I would urge Mayor Taylor to, without any further delay, to go ahead and follow with the courts for a permanent injunction. Might want to do a little trade-off. Can always offer, if you terminate for convenience, then maybe the city doesn't have to necessarily levy the fines against LiveWire Media. But that would just be an inducement. But I can assure you, short of this kind of legal action, Julie Giordano has made her intentions perfectly clear. She is going to move forward. She is going to thwart all efforts to develop a park there. She wants to turn it into a... an off-road... an off-road track, so...
Thank you, Mr. Goldberg.
Is that my bill?
Yes, it was.
I talk that long.
Thank you. Mary Hubner?
Good evening. I'm only... I'm only here... I didn't have prepared remarks tonight, but I mentioned last time, I believe, I'm president of the local bird club, which is a chapter of a state organization that's 75 years old. And birdwatching is a huge thing these days. And a friend of mine wrote a letter to Bob Culver back in 2016. And at that time, this was a fight for Pirate's Wharf. She said that birding is a $50 billion industry. I knew it was good. She said, "of which Maryland is estimated to receive approximately $1 billion." And this was 2016. And Wycomico County is one of the prime birding locations in Maryland. So this park is so important. I mentioned last time how beautiful it was. It's so important, for a variety of reasons, to be preserved, not to be destroyed by Jeeps or anything. It's to be enjoyed in its... the way it is right now. It's natural state. So that's... I'm just... I would be fighting with Shadow Hills if I can, because I think it's so important. And like Pirate's Wharf, it's a new park here. It's a great park. So we're lucky to have a few parks, but we need these parks. We need them. So much is coming out in the literature and the news these days about how good it is to be in nature. And I just heard something on the radio, I think yesterday, about getting your kid to go outside for a couple hours every day. We need parks. We need nature. And on a whole 'nother note, I hadn't planned to speak about this, but I applaud Ms. Jackson and Mr. Scheel when they voted against the annexation because of not knowing about the price of the apartments, the rent. But a 9% increase in our water and sewer, might as well say 10%, that's a heck of a raise. That's a heck of a raise. Somebody just gave you a home on Hastings Street. You might get a whole lot more offers if you... if you're asking 10%. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huber. Mikel Dalen?
Darlene.
Darlene, I'll get it right one of these times.
You can be singing that a couple times tonight. Hi, my name is Mikel Darlene. I'm a resident of Wycomico County. I'm here tonight to share my profound concern about the proposed Connolly Mill Park and the recent Jeep Fest at the Quarry. This event, held on May 4th and 5th, proceeded despite significant contractual, environmental, zoning, and ethical violations. It proceeded despite a cease-and-desist letter from the Salisbury City Attorney, a demand for termination letter from the Wycomico County Council, letters of objection from the most respected environmental agencies in our community, and a groundswell of citizen opposition. The county executive's decision to trample over all of these objections is nothing short of an act of bullying and force. To examine some of these issues in brief, there were contractual violations. As outlined in the county council's April 23rd letter to the county executive, the event advertised a 274-acre off-road park, far exceeding the 111.58 acres permitted in the MOU. This is a blatant disregard for the agreement and a concerning misuse of the 234-acre property. Environmental risk. Respected organizations like the NRCAC, Wycomico Environmental Trust, and Sierra Club have strongly opposed such off-road events due to the potential harm they pose to the Paleo Channel, the Wycomico River, and the park's delicate ecosystem. Their warnings cannot be ignored. Zoning violation. The Salisbury City Attorney has rendered an opinion that these off-road events are not a permitted use within the property's residential zoning district. This disregard for zoning regulations undermines the integrity of our community planning. Ethical lapses. The county executive's attempts to deflect responsibility onto the council and the supposed lack of public interest are disingenuous. Records show consistent public support for the park's development. The signing of the 364-day MOU without public or council input, coupled with the disappearance of funds earmarked for the park's master plan, raised serious ethical questions. These violations and ethical breaches erode public trust and set a dangerous precedent. Connolly Mill Park was meant to benefit our entire community, not a for-profit entity catering to a select few. We have brought these concerns before the city council, highlighting the threat these events pose to this unique park and our precious natural resources. We are immensely grateful for your support in the city attorney's letter addressing the zoning violations. The county executive's recent press release, which implied that the city's actions might jeopardize resources for special-needs children at Henry S. Parker Park, was a shameful and manipulative tactic. As someone with a family member with autism, I found this particularly reprehensible. The movement to save Connolly Mill Park is growing, with nearly 800 signatures on our petition and widespread support through our letter and email campaigns. I urged the mayor and city council to uphold the rule of law and protect our environment. Please pursue a permanent injunction to enforce the R-8A residential zoning code. Otherwise, the county executive will continue to ignore the directives of the city. Please also do all that you can to collaborate with the Wycomico County Council, environmental groups, and concerned citizens to save Connolly Mill Park. Let's preserve this space for the community, ensure responsible stewardship of our natural resources, and restore integrity to our governing process. Thank you.
Thank you. James Darlene?
Hi, my name is James Darlene, and I live in Delmar, Maryland. The City of Salisbury is just a few feet away from my home. I'm right on the line. I share many of the same concerns that the previous or upcoming speakers voiced about the Connolly Mill Road property where the Safari at the Quarry events took place on May 4th and 5th. I ask that the Salisbury council and mayor take prompt action to enforce the zoning... residential zoning code violations on that property. I also ask of the mayor and council to inform the public on your intention or plans on the zoning and property matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Alora Kater?
Hi, my name is Alora Kater, and I'm a resident of Wycomico County. I am passionate about outdoor recreation and believe that our community would greatly benefit from additional park space. The Connolly Mill Road location presents a unique opportunity to create a park that could serve as a central gathering place for children and families throughout Salisbury and Wycomico County. Such a park would promote physical activity, social interaction, and a deeper appreciation for the natural beauty of our region. I urge you to consider the positive impact that this park could have on the well-being of our community, particularly its youngest members. I believe that investing in this park would be valuable for the future of Salisbury and Wycomico County. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Fiona Darlene?
My name is Fiona Darlene, and I'm a resident of Wycomico County. I understand how the off-roaders feel about Safari at the Quarry, but I... but think about the environment. Think about the rabbits, frogs, and foxes, and more. Save our park. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor? We didn't put you behind the hardest one again, I'm sorry.
I didn't come here to talk about the Safari at the Quarry, but I will say this. I think the council and mayor need to set a timeline for doing the right thing, and that would be to shut that down, because it violates the zoning code. You may have seen, I think I sent you last week, my response to Mr. Wilber regarding his letter back to Ms. Ryan, the city attorney. His letter really is not a legal opinion. It's just a lot of stuff. It starts off by saying Ms. Giordano doesn't agree with the legal... the city's attorney. Doesn't say what he does, because he doesn't give an opinion, his own. He just talks about a lot of things, but no legal precedent. And I would say this. Let's use June 1. I see you've canceled your meeting for the 28th, now June 4th. Somebody needs to write, it should be the mayor, I think, but it could be mayor and council both. Ms. Juliana Giordano, pardon me. You have the right to rescind the MOU for convenience. You've got until June 1 to do that. If you don't do it, we're going to court for the permanent injunction. That's what you need to do. Now moving on, just a couple real quick on the fees for the parking garage. I don't know why the tenants of the Ross have to get a special parking rate in that garage. Everybody should be paying the same. I see you're upping it again this year, only $5 this time. For the general public, it's $75 for a permit. I think theirs is still $35. Everybody should be paying the same amount. Now, moving on, and I will show you what I... I'm going to come over here, because it's easier for everybody to see it. When I showed you this last week at the work session, I did not know about the plan to convert the garage into the Performing Arts Center for Salisbury University. That, I think, cast, and I had that break sign up, yeah, cast a whole new light on this parking debacle that we haven't been making already from selling the parking lots for the dollarback. Essentially, this will... this, and by this I mean changing the library to a performing arts center that the university says will attract thousands to downtown, is turning a debacle into what's going to be a disaster. I mean, unless they're going to have their events between midnight and 6:00 AM in the morning, they're not going to... there's not going to be ample parking by any shot. And the only reason there would be if they hold it in the middle of the night is because nobody can come. So, I mean, we have got a real situation, and this is what I call workstation-worthy, and it needs to be done quickly, because we have a real problem. Once these three parking lots, 115 and 11, are developed, they're gone. And you're going to have essentially a much larger parking demand for what is the library space. The use of the libraries tapered off in the last 30 to 35 years. You can begin that and a lot of other things. This is going to increase it significantly. I'm not against it. I'm not against having the Performing Arts Center. I think it's a good idea, but let's face it, you've got to have parking for something like this, and we're going to have a disaster if we don't do something sensible and preserve these parking lots more than what we're going to be doing if these apartments are developed. That's all I have to say, and I will probably be saying this again in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. And finally, Lynn Bratton?
Didn't say alcohol in the morning. Good evening, everybody. I apologize for my tardiness. I was at James &amp; Bennett celebrating some amazing students getting scholarships and recognition tonight, because it's that season. It's going to be happening at all the high schools, so we all need to applaud that process and be thankful and be optimistic about their futures. And fortunately, I was with the Optimist Club making those presentations. Real quick, I am a property owner, Lynn Bratton, live in Salisbury. I've been here for my half... over half my life, more than half my life. And recently, we got a survey card in the mail, a little postcard, asking for us to respond about what kind of pipes go into our homes, and it was sent to occupant, resident occupant, at my address. Now, I know how to get in my basement, and I know how to look at things, and I have a plumber, and I will figure it out. But I feel as though, since that was being sent out to all the occupants in the City of Salisbury, probably with homes that were built in a certain timeframe, some of mine are rental homes, and my rental clients are not going to have the same interest in finding out what their pipes are as I probably would, or have the ability to hire a plumber to come in and help them figure it out. There's a YouTube I can look at, and there's some pictures. But I really do think, since those bills, those water bills, always come to me anyway for all of those houses, why wouldn't they have just used the water bill addresses that, you know, like Bratton Properties LLC gets the water bill for 306 Vine Street? Why didn't they just send it to me the same way they would have sent me that water bill, so that I could then acknowledge and get the information back to the city that you need? Because it is a requirement that you do need that, before I believe the MDE has got some guidelines and some rules and regulations on that. We heard many months ago from Ms. Oberton, who brought that to our awareness. She works in... up in another situ... in another city town, and she brought it to our awareness, and we just get those postcards. I got mine yesterday. So be looking for them, and they're simply addressed occupant and the address. And it's like three questions or two questions, and I really think it should have gone... And it's like three questions or two questions, and I really think it should have gone to the same addresses where the water bills go. That, to me, would have been a better way to get the results back that you wanted to get. That's my two cents on that. And maybe would have stopped some of the follow-up issues that you're going to have with trying to get the data. The other thing I just wanted to say is, at the last work session, there were questions that were posed concerning Horizon, the bond issues, the borrowing, the fact that its interest rates are as high as they've ever been, and there were some comments made that it was really apples and oranges and two different pots of money, but money coming into our city government is still money coming into our city government that can be spent on things that need to be spent on. And as long as we keep finding ways not to have that money coming in through whatever program it might be, just name them, whatever it would be, right now it's Horizon, there was Here is Home, you know, I don't know what else might be coming down the pike, but we need to be watching the pennies and the nickels and the dimes, even though we want to spend the millions. And part of that is watching the debt service on the money that we're borrowing because that's money that we just have to pay that debt service on. Somebody mentioned while ago the 9% increase in the water bills, taxes, I don't think are going up this year hopefully, but they have many times in the past few years. So we need to just, I'm just asking and begging and pleading, as we go through this budget, as you make those bond issue requests, as you look at the money that's been spent on the Unity Square, which by the way was quite inhabited while ago when I came by, but 1.1, 1.2 million was borrowed just to pay for that in the bond issues that you're just now funding. That's a lot of money, and I really thought we had the money before we built it. I didn't know we were going to have to borrow money to pay somebody off after it was built. So I imagine a lot of people maybe had the same thought on that one. That's it. Lead pipes, let's get rid of them, let's figure out where they are, let's get it to the right people to get the information so we don't have a lot of backpedaling and trying to get the information. And be frugal, and be mindful of the dollars, and the cents will take care of themselves.
Thank you, Ms. Bratton. And it appears we do have one public comment via our online platform.
Holly, you're up.
Hey, guys. I am in agreement with Bob Taylor in regards to the charge for the parking fees because my office, we are paying $70 per agent that is occupying our office in addition to my tenants that are using the other lot, I think it's Lot 1. They're also having to pay that rate, which I don't think it's fair that they, the Ross building and other new developments are sent to, are set to get a cheaper rate, whereas we're paying double that, and that's a monthly cost. In addition, I agree with Lynn Bratton. Until we had a recent meeting, I had no idea that that money wasn't grant money that was utilized for Unity Square, so it was a little bit upsetting to hear that we were spending that much, although it is nice, it is being occupied, but we also have other areas that need to be addressed. So I do think that when you guys are doing the budget, we should pay close attention to, as Lynn said, you know, the pennies and the dollars because it all does add up at some point, you know, and that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Worthington. Okay. Seeing or hearing no other public comments, we'll move forward to administration and council comments. I do understand that the mayor is under the weather, so we'll move to city administrator to give us any comments from administration.
Absolutely, just a couple things. I appreciate us passing forward the first reading of the budget. It sounds like we have some work to do on the fee schedule, so I'm looking forward to a robust conversation on that. Couple items coming up this week. The mayor is sick today, but he is excited to host his next meet the mayor at the Salisbury headquarters this Wednesday at 5:00 PM. The topic will be around Vision Zero, specifically some of our public infrastructure around Vision Zero, which includes bikeways and sidewalks, et cetera. And then on the 17th, we've mentioned Unity Square, we will be doing our official ribbon cutting, the 5:30 at Unity Square in conjunction with the Third Friday event. So we're finishing up installing our water feature right now, which will be live at the ribbon cutting, so we're looking forward to have it fully functional. Those are my comments that I have.
Great, well, thank you. All right, we'll move forward to council comments, and we'll start with council vice president, Blake.
Oh, you're starting to talk.
Yes.
You are starting to talk.
Right, right. I just want to say about the roads and the streets, I do go to the neighborhoods, I did go to Shoemaker Manor, I did reach out to the city administrator. There is a formula that the city uses to determine the condition of any road for any repair, and you get put on that list in the priority of the condition of the road that you're in. So I fully did explain that, I know that Mr. Kitro explained that. I was just out at another community recently and emailed a bunch of stuff. It went to city administrator, they're looking into it. It may take a couple weeks sometimes for them to look at either send someone out there for the roads, or their formula, or whatever, but there is a, is that correct, there's a formula, right?
Yes.
Okay, that is used when they assess the conditions of the roads. And so I do go out and I do follow up, and it's unfortunate that I can't personally pave every road and install all new lights. If I could, believe me, I would. I would do it, I would do it. I would do it in my own neighborhood also. So just having said that, there's a lot going on. I know my colleagues will talk about all kind of cool events going on, but I just want to say, if you are healthy enough, please, please, please donate blood. Thank you.
Thank you, council vice president. Councilwoman Gregory?
Well, just had the latest disability advisory committee meeting. There was a lot discussed, but one of the things that came up was a discussion from a citizen who attended, who has need for using Shore Transit, and apparently Shore Transit is now telling residents of the city that they don't actually live in city limits and therefore are not eligible for scheduling any day, Monday through Friday. They're only eligible to schedule pickups or rides on, I believe it was Mondays and Thursdays. So I would urge the mayor, when the DAC reaches out about this issue, to follow through on creating a dialogue with Shore Transit to make sure that we're getting, our residents are getting the services that they need because public transit is difficult as it is, and there's no need to make it more difficult for those who need it the most, particularly the disabled in our community. That said, moving on, the one thing I want to kind of promote today, besides the Unity Square ribbon cutting, which Andy already covered, is the 70th anniversary gala at the Salisbury Zoo. We are, I think, the only free zoo left in the United States, so...
Of that size.
Of that size, of that size. So, I mean, this is incredibly important. It's a fundraiser, it helps support the zoo. I'm asking everybody to get your tickets, come out, have a great, you know, dinner, presentation, there's a social hour, there's auctions, all kinds of great stuff, all going to support the zoo. So that's happening on the 8th, yeah, June 8th, at, from 5:00 to 9:00 PM. So I would really hope to see you guys there.
Thank you, councilwoman. Councilwoman Jackson?
My concern today is annexation. And the reason being is, we're allowing people and developers to come into our communities and our city, build. Half the time, we don't even know what they're building. Just like I said about this area, the Monocan and Mohawk Avenue, we're going to annex the city into the county. And that part, in that community, you can't build an apartment, building in that community, and expect the people who live in that community to afford it. Now, we're letting, we're allowing, we're going to do an annexation, but we don't even know what these people are building. All we know is that they're building apartments, and it bothers me. We're allowing these people to come in. I'm looking at several other developments that have been put up for years, that we allowed them to come and build these places, these developments, these apartments, and now they are a shamble. Because we won't hold their feet to the fire, it's just like we don't care because they're predominantly in a poverty-stricken community. And I am so tired of stuff being allowed to come in our community, and it's not cohesive, it's not affordable. Probably 75% of our city cannot afford to pay their rent. They're working two and three jobs. Nobody should have to work two or three jobs to afford to live in any dwelling, not unless it's a $300,000 home. And I am just, I'm done with this. I am upset. I'm very upset because I just think it's the worst thing in the world that we can do. Let people, I used to be on Planning and Zoning, and I watched it, and I watched people come in and decide to want to build things or add on to developments. We need fair and affordable housing. People are living in the street, homelessness, and we worry about developments being built, and we don't even know how much these people are going to charge, whether they're going to be fair and affordable. It's sickening to me, it is. And we should be more concerned about our citizens than we should be worried about our developers. And before these developers come in our communities and build homes, we should know what they're building in our community. Thank you, and I'm done for today. I'm done, I'm done.
Thank you, councilwoman. Councilwoman DeJill?
I have two parts tonight. Thank you for the people coming in again tonight. Also, I would like to piggyback, if I may, on councilwoman Blake. We may not know where the potholes are or where the issues are. We need your help to report them, and there is a way that you can do that. Your boda shared that with me. You can go online and report on the website that your car just fell into a pothole. You just need to give them where it is, so they'll do their best, so.
Citizen's concern.
Citizen's concern, exactly. Another thing is Habitat is having a blessing of two more houses, so that's a nice project to support. Salvation Army, best bang for your buck as far as, you know, people said for years, they had a nice thing for their community on Saturday. Thank heavens, it was raining because none of us, they didn't have the dunking booth, which they had asked us if we would like to do. I had a meeting with the Airport Commission. The training school is ready to go, but government is holding them up. They are waiting for FFA certification, and the Chamber After Hours was a fun event that we attended just to kind of get a feel for what people are thinking. Now, my other piece of my comment, we talked about the Pilot project last meeting, and it is in process, as Mr. Kitro said, they're developing it. I would like, because again, I'm going to pull the newbie, I would like to have a follow-up discussion, and I would like to take a work session to put in front of us all four of these particular projects and discuss and evaluate what they are doing or helping in our community. They are the Horizon, the TIF, Here is Home, and the Pilot. So at some point, I think those four should be publicly shared so that we, as a community, know things have taken place that cannot be undone. I understand that. But moving forward, I think we need to be more informed. Thank you.
Thank you, councilwoman, and I believe councilwoman Gregory has one more addition.
Yeah. I'm so sorry. I, you know, something, this weekend, the council president and myself attended an end-of-life celebration for Mayor Todd Knox's mother who passed, and unfortunately, just a few days later, after she had passed, his grandmother passed as well. So I just really want us to lift Mayor Knox up and keep him in our thoughts and our prayers, and just make sure that we are taking care of those in our, in our community and looking out for each other because it really has hit home the past couple of weeks, how easily things can change in life. So I just wanted to bring that up, and I want the mayor to know that we are all thinking about him and sending him our best and support him, and are here for anything he needs.
Yes. Thank you, councilwoman. That was on my list, and so I'll underscore that, that Salisbury is here for you, Mayor Knox of Waucomoco, and through this very, very difficult time, so please, residents, keep him in your thoughts and prayers. I do want to mention, it slipped my mind, happy birthday to Councilwoman Blake, she had a birthday last week, and so we want to celebrate her on her 25th birthday.
How old are you?
Yeah.
29 and holding.
Yes. I know there's a lot of discussion in the council, you know, from the county, had a lot of discussions last week on the library and the Performing Arts Center that's coming to our town, and, you know, so, you know, there's a lot of moving and a lot of shaking and a lot of change going on in our community, and I know that's, sometimes I think change is one of the hardest things for people to get accustomed to. What I'll say, and something I did myself, is to definitely research and gather all the facts that will help in this transition, transitionary period, and so that we know how to best help our community. And that's something that I did and I continue to do, is to figure out how this is going to be an asset to our community, and as the more I read and understand this, I know that the pieces will, and I believe it will, be an incredible move, something that's good for our community. So I'm staying informed myself, and so I urge the residents to get informed as possible and see where, see where you yourself can help as well. And so, and like Mr. Taylor alluded to, again, we have some work to do as it comes to parking in our city, to make sure that we can, make sure that these projects can happen and that people can park and live, work, and play here in our community. So, and I know that we, some of us on the council, have been trying to formulate that conversation, and so, and I've been pushing it, but I think there's no more pushing it. The conversation is in front of us now, that we, as a city, have to figure out how to, how to park those people responsibly, of course, and make sure that it's fiscally responsible and that it's in a manner that will occupy those people who are, again, are living, working, and playing in our downtown and in our community. So I look forward to shaping those conversations in the very, very near future. As it pertains to Safari at the Quarry, again, I share some of the same sentiments and some of the responses and that some folks on the county have seen, have said, and the executive, and, you know, again, I'm just disheartened sometimes at the rhetoric that we'll use that is just, it's just not, it's not okay. And so I have full faith that administration and our mayor will be the deciding factors as to how and when those if-finds and those things will come into play. That's not for us to decide on the legislative piece, but we do, again, we've expressed our concerns and we express where we are with this, and so, again, we'll help shape and move that conversation, so, but that onus is on the mayor and administration to formulate that conversation. So I look forward to hearing how that'll be shaped in the very near future. I think that is all I have, and again, we appreciate your comments, questions, and concerns, and again, we look forward to the upcoming budget conversations. Do know that we've taken it into very, very steep consideration. We spent a lot of time, council, going over the budget, and we had a lot of questions and concerns, so we're trying to make sure, like Ms. Bratton said, make sure that we're spending those dollars and cents responsibly. So we look forward to your input on that. And with that, this session is now adjourned. And with that, this session is now adjourned.